Discussing the items mentioned in the motion to go into executive session. At this time, we will have the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance, Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Good afternoon. It gives me pleasure to introduce Ms. Alvera Butler, who's going to introduce our speaker for this evening. Ms. Butler?
Good evening. She currently studies cello with Dr. Robert Jeselson at the University of South Carolina and is also a member of the USC pre-college cello class. Zachary is currently a member of the South Carolina Philharmonic Youth Orchestra, South Carolina Region Orchestras 2015 and 16, and the South Carolina Cello Choir 2016. He attended the South Carolina Governor's School for the Arts and Humanities Summer Programs in 2015 and 16, and has received superior ratings at the SCMEA Solo and Ensemble and Concert Festivals, and is an afternoon music and Eau Claire Music Club Scholarship recipient. Zachary has recently been accepted to attend the 2017 Green Mountain Chamber Summer Music Festival in Burlington, Vermont, and will be there for one month, beginning June 25th. Zachary is a corporal in the Blythewood High School JROTC and a member of the Robotics Club. Finally, Zachary is the son of Tyron A. Butler, Jr., and yours truly, Alvera C. Butler. And he has two sisters, Zaylee, a freshman at College Charleston, and Zaren, who is a rising sophomore at Blythewood High School. He will perform for this evening's inspirational moment, the Allegro Appassionato by romantic composer Camille Saison, and will be accompanied by Dr. Elisa Moskowitz.
Thank you, Zachary.
That was amazing, the first time we've ever had music.
Exactly.
And also, I think the, I usually think of that as a big instrument, but you make it look small. That's a great thing, you're a tall guy. Trust me, I'm big this way, you're big that way, okay? Absolutely, sorry.
Thank you, thank you. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Again, thank you so much, Zachary. Great job.
Absolutely, thank you, that was, that was beautiful. All right, next on our agenda, we have the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval of the agenda, with the exception of 12.1, that we, I move that we table that.
Motion's been made by Mr. Plank. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mackey. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote at this time. Next on our agenda, we have our special recognitions, Dr. Hamm.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Martha Jones will be leading us in the special recognitions. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Hamm. School may be out, but the accolades and achievements continue to come to our district. Tonight, we're going to honor several groups of outstanding accomplishments by students, staff, administrators, and school board members. So, when I call your name, please come forward. Now, we've gone from the arts to athletics. We've got some of the fastest runners and jumpers in the state in this district, and they've joined us this evening to be recognized for winning the state title in track and field. I'll call you up by your schools. First, from Westwood High School, we have Kayden Briggs, Trini Forgett, Tyron Goings, Demonte Romi, Jasmine Brown, and Diamond Rush, as well as Coach Rod Lurick, and Assistant Girls Coach Akeisha Flagler, Athletic Director Jason Powell, and Principal Dr. Cheryl Guy. Both Westwood boys and girls finished with phenomenal seasons. The boys finishing as state runner-ups, and the girls had a fourth-place finish overall. I'm not sure what's in the drinking water out there in Westwood, Cheryl, but you might want to bottle it. Kayden Briggs won three state titles, the 110-meter hurdle, high hurdles, with a time of 14.7 seconds. Now, you need to think about these, what they're doing and the times that they're doing it in. 400 hurdles, with a time of 54.03 seconds. Kayden, along with Red Hawks teammates Trini Forgett, Tyron Goings, and Demonte Romi, won the state title in the 4x100 relay with a time of 41.58 seconds, and won by just three tenths of a second. So, way to go, Red Hawks and Coach Rod. Great job, great job. The girls brought home three first-place finishes, which propelled them to the fourth-place finish overall. Diamond Rush claimed the gold in the 100-meter dash at 12.15 seconds, and the 200-meter dash at 24.4 seconds. Begs to question if the name Rush has anything to do with this. It's working for you. Jasmine Brown took first in the long jump at 18.02 inches. That's a long way. Congratulations, ladies, and to your coaches Cory Head, who could not be here with us tonight, and Assistant Coach Akeisha Flagler. Thank you so much, congratulations. And now, we ask the Blythewood track team to sprint on up here. We have Kenny Benton, Josh Bowers, and Robert Braswell, along with Coach Yolanda Marshall and Principal Dr. Brenda Hafner. These three Bengals had great success at the state meet in the 5A division. Kenny Benton ran and won the 100-meter dash in 11.11 seconds. Josh Bowers took first place in the 800-meter run with a personal best of 155.38. And Robert Braswell took first place in the high jump at 6 feet 6 inches, tying his personal record. All of their success happened, helped them finish fourth overall in the 5A division. Congratulations, Blythewood High School. And now, we call up a runner from Ridgeview High School, who we have honored every year, and we still have another year to go. Janada Ellis-Car. Please come forward with your coach Warren Ure, Athletic Director Brian Rosefield, and Principal Dr. Brenda Max Foxworth. Janada makes it look easy, but she won the 4A 400-meter dash with a time of 56.31 seconds. It was the best in the state. She has been a state winner for each of her three years, and we hope to be able to continue that tradition into her senior year. Congratulations. She's so very nonchalant about this, like it's no big deal. Good job. Congratulations to each of our state champion track and field stars. Now, to stay with the athletic, healthy, living theme, we call up two of our healthiest schools, Bridge Creek Elementary and Principal Kristen Eubanks, and physical education teacher Lindsay Belleville, and Dent Middle School Principal Tamela Ashford, and Assistant Principal Tom Toyber. These two schools have received the 2017 Bronze National Healthy Schools Award by the Alliance for a Healthier Generation, and each has been named one of America's healthiest schools. This is Bridge Creek's second time for this honor. The school doesn't give unhealthy snacks, has a morning running club, and a sports and fitness club. Dent has also made its help, its school a healthier place for staff by holding a Biggest Loser contest, where one staff member lost 40 pounds. Wow. They also had a healthy recipe exchange and a Zumba marathon. Bet that was fun. Congratulations Dent and Bridge Creek for helping to bring a good, healthy life to our children and employees. We couldn't be as successful in athletics in Richland, too, without wonderful facilities. At this time, we'd like to call forward the hard workers who keep our athletic fields up to par. Please come forward Stadium and Turf Manager Billy Potasky, and his loyal crew Stan Ford, Ronald Howard, Larry Medlin, and Adam Woodley. Pioneer Athletics has announced its winners of their 2017 Fields of Excellence Awards, and once again, all three of our district stadiums have made the list of the top maintained facilities in the country. The Fields of Excellence Award Program is designed to make sure that others more, to make others more aware of your hard work, and help you gain the recognition your efforts deserve. Often faced with tightened budgets, you don't ever have to deal with that, do you? And being asked to do more with less, our crews exemplify teamwork and dedication. Thank you for making game day a special day by producing an exceptional field of play. Congratulations, thank you. Now, we honor some great communicators. We call forward winners from the South Carolina National School Public Relations Association for Excellence in Educational Communications. Staff members from the district's communications department and four high schools were honored at the SC Insprah Rewards for Excellence Luncheon in April. We'll call up the winners by school and department. First, from Richland Northeast, Vanessa Roden, Dr. Sabrina Suber, and Michael Sumpter, please come forward. And I don't think Dr. Suber's here, but Mr. Sumpter is, and Ms. Roden is. Vanessa Roden won an award in the photography category for football support flag run. Dr. Sabrina Suber won an Insprah Award for the special purpose publication category for Richland Northeast School and Choice Brochure. And Michael Sumpter was recognized in the annual report category for the annual parent update. Congratulations to you. Now, Ridgeview High School wowed the judges. Dr. Brenda Max Foxworth? Well, let's bring these folks up here. Are you here, Dr. Brenda Max? Yes, bring your whole team up here. Dr. Max Foxworth was recognized in the annual report category for the annual parent update. Athletic Director Brian Rosefield won for identity image packages for athletic department core values. Didn't even know that was a category. Melissa Myers was honored for the Ridgeview High School portfolio. Bob Crowley was recognized in the newsletter category at The View Daily. And Student Activities Director Wendy Wimmer won three awards. For one, for the 9/11 tribute, a special purpose video on summer reading, and in the script category, she was recognized for the Winter Wishes script. And to the top, and to top it all off, the Ridgeview Communications Team came home with a gold medallion award. So, congratulations to you. From Spring Valley High School, we call forward Yvonne Washington with Principal Jeff Timoney. Yvonne won an Insprah Award for Spring Valley's Newsletter. Once again, great communicators. We're going to ask Dr. Cheryl Guy and Janet Frick to come join us. Westwood High School won two awards from the SC Insprah Luncheon. Janet Frick won an award for its special purpose publication. Mary Brebner, who could not be here, won for marketing and for putting together a brochure promoting Westwood's Eye Red Magnet. And I'm proud to say, I'll tell you that in just a minute, congratulations. I'm not sure I'm in that communicator category. All right. Now, I'm proud to say that our own communications team brought home 11 awards from SC Insprah. I'm going to invite my colleagues from the Communications and Strategic Partnerships Department up. Ish, as we all know, her, had to go home sick today, so she's not here, but she is a winner for marketing for the Richland Two Twitter account. Brian Cowley, who's up there somewhere, won for his video on the Westwood Holidays Project. Adam Ginsburg, who is also wherever Brian is, had three winning videos. They were about student Jordan Watkins, Bridge Creek School Video, and the Catawba Trail Conservation Garden. Megan Moore, who is here, had three winning entries, the Back to School Handbook, the Richland Two website, and some of her photography. And Dr. Teresa Riley-Stevens, who couldn't be here tonight, had a winning billboard and two writing pieces that won rewards of excellence. Congratulations to all of the SC Insprah winners. And now, we call forward Dr. Cheryl Caution-Parker. She has a look of surprise on her face. Dr. Monica Elkins-Johnson, and Dr. Debbie Hamm. Now, we caught wind of this several weeks ago, but these ladies have been named Successful Women in Education by the Iota Omicron Sigma Alumni Chapter of Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority. And I think we can all agree, it's well-deserved and well-earned. The sorority is a nonprofit whose aim is to enhance the quality of life within the community. Public service, leadership development, and the education of youth are the hallmark of the organization's programs and activities. These ladies were honored with a trophy at the sorority's recent Ladies of Distinction Tea. Congratulations. Congratulations to all our honorees tonight, thank you.
I didn't want to mess up all the Women of Distinction being in that picture. All right, next we have our legislative agenda, Mr. Plank, legislative update, rather.
And as people exit, I just want to put, put one of those athletes into perspective. One, congrats to all the honorees, but, you know, the 100-meter dash, we all know and have heard of Usain Bolt, and the world record that he has set back in 2009 was 9.58. And so, tonight's athlete had it in 11.11. And even though those are measured in hundreds and thousands of a second, that's a one-and-a-half second difference. So, that just, just to put that in perspective, that's amazingly fast. Our legislative update tonight, you know, the last Tuesday, the General Assembly had passed the spending budget and moved it on to the, to the governor. The three items I wanted to highlight, we'll move into more detail during the budget update from Dr. Miley in Agenda Item 11.2, but the education funding, the EFA, was increased, $75 to 2,425. I do want to, as much as the increase is appreciated, I do want to put in that in perspective as well, that if, if the General Assembly had followed the mandates over the years in which the base student costs should be increased, that should be $2,933. So, we're actually at a $508 shortfall. So, we, we enjoy the increase, and at the same time, I think it's important to know we're still at a $508 deficit. On the state pensions, that was, that was approved as is, and you can see that up on the screen on how that has moved through, we've been talking about that for several weeks. Finally, the school buses, school buses, you may have seen, was one of the veto items, in which two-thirds of the funding for the school buses was vetoed. And so, I'll have Dr. Miley address that and how that impacts our district as well. But I'd open up at this point, Mr. Chair, any questions?
Anybody have any questions? No. I just wanted to make a comment on the buses, you know, I think that we've taught all year long, and not just in our school district, about where we are with our buses, the shortfall in the number of buses that we have, the age of the buses that we have. We've all heard about buses catching fire, we've had a bus catch fire here in this district. Luckily, there were no students onboard at the time, but we have had that happen, and, you know, when you look at the priority, the priority for the state should be the safety of our students, and to make sure that they have safe transportation to get to school every day. And to veto the money from the buses, for the buses, or $20 million worth of money for the buses, which puts our students at risk over what I'm deeming as playing politics, because the money was still allocated to be spent, in his opinion, on other things. So, it wasn't even a savings. I think it's just a travesty to our students. And our legislature did the right thing, and took a step forward in approving those funds, and the governor vetoed it, and I think the legislature's, everything I'm hearing is that they're, they're going to override that veto, but I think to play politics with, with that is just unfathomable. And we've got to take care of our students and make sure they're safe when they come to school every day. So, even that $29 million, it's a drop in the bucket compared to the needs of the state, but it is a step forward, and it is action in the positive direction. So, I look forward to the legislature and them coming back when they do to address this issue, and hopefully override the governor's veto on this. I think Molly Spearman has spoken out loudly about it, the School Boards Association, I've spoke with Richland One, Cheryl Harris, their board chair, they feel just as strongly as we do about this issue. And I think the state, you know, everybody I've talked to, I haven't found a single person that felt that, that that was an appropriate action as it relates to our students. So, I look forward to, to where that ends up. I think we'll be okay at the end of the day, but to even have to address this issue after the legislature took care of it is just incredible. So, anyways, that's my comment on that, and I think I represent the rest of the board on, on those, on those comments. So, all right, if there's nothing else, we will move on to the consent agenda. If I can have a motion?
It's a move. It's a move by Mr. Plank. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mackey. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote at this time. Motion passes 7-0, thank you very much. Next on our agenda, we have public participation. I have no one who's signed up, but if you'd like to do so, please come forward now. And with no one coming forward, Ms. Mackey?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could take a point of personal privilege, I would like to introduce a special visitor with us tonight. Her name is Marisolyn McDonald. Marisol, if you would stand for us, I'd just like to introduce everyone to this.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, we have public participation. I have no one who's signed up, but if you'd like to do so, please come forward now. And with no one coming forward, Ms. Mackey?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could take a point of personal privilege, I would like to introduce a special visitor with us tonight. Her name is Marisolyn McDonald. Rissy, if you would stand for us. I'd just like to introduce everyone to this special young lady. She is actually a 7th grader in the TLC program at Dent Middle School. She's an amazing young lady. She's been recently at the State House and taking special pictures there. She's with her mom, Kayla Lettsi, and probably her second mom, Tiffany James, all of whom are very actively engaged in our community. Tiffany with Women in Philanthropy and students and just taking pride in our environment. And one of the things I wanted to share about Rissy, if I can, is that she, on her Instagram, calls herself "akkidvism," is that right? Instead of activism? And she has a challenge for the summer. Some people read in the summer and take breaks and vacation and things of that nature, all of which are quite productive. Rissy's challenge this summer was that she had people, A, choose an issue, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm old and tired. Number one, choose an issue. Number two, research the issue. Number three, complete a project/attend an event. And number four, share your akkidvism story online. And she has 15 other students who, or peers, who have taken that challenge with her just to take pride in your community and the things that are going on around you and to do something about issues. And she is not here for special credit. She's not here for an internship or to receive class credit or anything like that. She has, what should I say, reminded me relentlessly to tell her when we have school board meetings, because she wants to come just to find out what goes on and to learn more and just to be involved. And every time I think about forgetting to tell you, she reminds me, Ms. Amelia, when is the next school board meeting? Because I have to see what my mom has going on to make sure that I can be there. And this has been going on for a few months now, I think. We've been trying to get together. But I just wanted to recognize her and tell you how proud we are of you, a product of District Two, but mostly of your mom and the people who love you and pour into you. And we're just happy to have you here. I hope you enjoy the school board meeting. It's not too terribly boring. You take something away and pick an issue and research it. But thank you for being here, sweetie. We appreciate you taking the time to be here just because you wanted to. Thank you.
Ms. Mackey, I want to add on that Rissy's special to me because she's my daughter's friend. So they are, they hang out with each other, and they're goofy girls together and do all kinds of fun stuff. So it's great to see you here, Rissy. I got to eat lunch with you this year, right, at school, and got to spend time. So it's great to have you here with us. Thank you. Yep. All right. Next, we have our executive session items. If I can have a motion on our student appeals.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull out student number four.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make the motion for student number one, the IEP team at Blythewood Academy with Luradac. Student number two, deny the appeal. Student number three, the IEP team at Blythewood Academy with Luradac. Student number five, deny the appeal.
Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Elkins-Johnson. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote at this time. Motion passes 7-0. All right, Ms. Agostini?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion that for student number four, we deny the appeal.
Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Caution-Parker. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote at this time. Uh, okay. I mean, a vote came up, right? Oh, it's not, okay. Okay. So the motion passes 6 to 1. Thank you very much. All right, next on our agenda, all business, no action, policy revisions. Dr. Hamm?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we're continuing to trek our way through the policy manuals. We attempt to bring all of our policies up to date. So tonight, we have four policies for your consideration. Policy BC, Board Member Conduct. Policy BCA, Board Member Code of Ethics. Policy BCB, Board Member Conflict of Interest. And BD, Organization and the School Board. If you have any questions, Marshall Lynn Franklin is available to answer them.
I do have one question. So this is the, oh goodness, BC, Board Member Conduct. Refuse to attend or participate in unofficial meetings with other board members. An unofficial meeting is a private meeting of two or more board members at which board business is discussed. So our quorum is five. So we can't take any action with less than five. But if more than two of us come together at a meeting, that's considered to be out of bounds? Two or more, so that means I can't talk to another board member ever? And we've talked about that before. I'm just asking, like, really? I can't talk to another board member? Let's be careful with the word plotting, right? I mean, I'm going to overthrow the world, and I've got a cat and call myself Doctor Evil. But, I mean, because I, you know, one is the Board Chair. You call, I mean, I call people to ask if they have concerns over board business issues. I mean, we have contractual matters that are coming up that I talk to each board member in order to make sure they're aware of the extent of the request and what it is. I mean, that, I don't see how, that, to me, is just how you do business, not plotting. It's a matter of discussion about where things. Make sure that I'm hearing everybody's concerns. I mean, that's one of the complaints I get now, is people tell me I don't talk to them enough to hear their concerns. So this is telling me I can't talk to them. Ms. Agostini?
My thoughts sort of coincide with you. Being a new school board member, I'm very concerned, because I've turned to Mr. Plank and Mr. Manning and Dr. Elkins-Johnson and myself talk about going to lunch. To me, this seems that all of these are going to be prohibited. If I go sit in their office and have a discussion about any matter that relates to the board, that I might be plotting something, where I'm just trying to. Two or, well, that's two.
That's two.
It's two. So we can't do that, based upon what I'm reading here.
Mr. Chairman, let me make a suggestion. First of all, let's get back to the School Boards Association and find out if there's a legal basis for this. And secondly, if there's some way that we can clarify exactly what is a discussion versus conducting board business. And we'll get back to you either with a suggested change in language or clarification that might be helpful. This is first reading, so.
Yeah.
Marshall Lynn.
I mean, I think there's an option somewhere in the middle, which is less than a quorum.
Let me ask this too, just to make sure that when we, I think we're going to try to make sure that we arrive at a consensus, but I want to make sure that we're not in violation. I mean, we had graduations a couple of weeks ago. And while we're sitting in the green room eating lunch, there are more than two or three board members, you know, sitting together at a table. And if I look at this, we could be in violation of policies. So just making sure that, my concern is making sure that we have clarity so that we're not in violation of just sitting and eating together. It was, we have unofficial meetings, but just sitting and eating together and making sure that we don't talk about anything school-related. I mean, that's what, that's what we all come together, that's what we all have in common. So I just want to make sure that we're not in violation.
So it sounds like you're saying to include the word "quorum" somewhere in the statement.
I think it should be, I think as long as it's less than a quorum, because when you get onto a quorum, then you essentially are taking, you have the ability to take action if you call a meeting in a quorum. Anything less than a quorum, I think, is where we're having a meeting to discuss potential issues. And I'll give you another example. When we do facilities updates and things like that, I know Dr. Hamm and Baron, Dr. Davis, and Mr. Price can tell you, we've called meetings before and just said we need less than four board members at any one meeting in order to discuss zoning issues, in order to discuss facility issues, all kinds of stuff, that that would be considered a secret meeting where we're plotting the end of the world. I just think we need to look at less than a quorum as being acceptable. Unless somehow, school boards or some other lawyer says that it needs to be less than that. Mr. Chair? Dr. Caution-Parker, and then Mr. Plank.
I think, and having worked with policies for 16 years, I think this is pretty much based on what happened in the Low Country to at least two or three different school districts regarding hiring of the superintendent and decisions being made. But I agree with you. I think that we need to look at this and, you know, kind of reword it. But I think that the wording that's being used here is based on that situation, those two situations that I know of in the Low Country most recently.
And I mean, you know, at the end of the day, listen, it, right, intent, you know, trying sometimes to police intent, though, is hard. We can narrow it down to two, and then I'll go meet, you know, with Mr. Shad and Dr. Caution-Parker and Mr. Plank, and I'll go meet with everybody and just, you know, circle around. I mean, it'll be more work, but I can do it if I have ill intent. So, you know, I think the idea of not having a quorum, I don't even care if it's three. I mean, I think that's something we could probably work around, but, you know, our quorum is five. So I think we need to look at somewhere between less than a quorum, maybe three, maybe four, whatever. But something, I mean, two, we can't even talk to each other.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, now, I would concur with the comments that have been made so far. In addition, we have, you know, code BCA, which is the Board Member Code of Ethics. And I think that, I certainly understand the intent of what this, what we're discussing to avoid what Dr. Caution-Parker's talked about, but I do, and about lunches, it specifically states board business. So I think we're okay with not discussing board business, but it also relies on just integrity and the ethic code. So I think that I would agree that we use the word "quorum" in there as well.
Okay. Other board members, other questions or comments on?
Other board members, other questions or comments on the policies in front of us? I see there were a lot of fixes that Ms. Mackey brought up before, and that's been, I think, all resolved, if I'm not mistaken. Yes, ma'am.
On what Mr. Plank just referred to on BCA, that you seem to, your board meetings such a secret, is that what we're looking at changing as well? Meetings which are not official and John Lewis should not handle.
And that's a great point. What is, I mean, what is a secret meeting?
Let me just chime in. I was trying to just keep calm, but I think, just from past experiences, I'm thinking they're talking about when board members get together secretly, which have been done in the past before with current and previous board members, where you're talking about things that you want to do.
I think we want to be careful throwing accusations at current board members.
Right, but I'm just saying, so that's what they're saying about the secret.
If we need to file an ethics charge, then we need to do that. But we're not going to sit here and throw stones and accusations at secret meetings.
I'm not throwing stones. I'm trying to clarify when you have three or four board members getting together and talking about things or making arrangements to do things, I think that's what they may be talking about with "secret." That's just my opinion, and everyone else has shared there. So I'm just sharing my opinion. Whether you agree with it or not, I'm sorry, but that's just my opinion about what they mean by "secret meetings." And I think this is a great discussion, because I think moving forward, this will have all of us very mindful not to get together with two, three, or even four board members to talk about school business. So it's not to throw anyone under the bus, it's just my opinion of what I think they're talking about. And of course, they can change the wording.
So to be clear, you're advocating that we not have meetings with three of us?
Not to discuss board business, no.
Well, I think that's one opinion.
Right.
The majority, I think I'm hearing, is less than a quorum, is what I'm hearing.
I think that what I hear, we're all trying to do, is arrive at a consensus with regard to definitions and with regard to intent. When we went to the graduation, there were, what, three, four board members on the bus going to and from graduations? So what I hear correctly is that we can be together and enjoy, you know, talking about certain things, graduations, fellowshipping, but being sure that we're not conducting official board business. So what I think I hear all of us saying is that we're just trying to make sure we're clear on definitions and intent, because there are plenty of times where there are two or more board members together, such as, you know, the bus going to and from graduation, where we had, you know, in-depth conversations, but just making sure we didn't discuss anything that needed to be ruled upon or voted upon, or that something that was up for discussion in an action item or even an informational item. So I think we're just, I think we're just making sure we're trying to get clear with regard to definitions.
I hear that, but I also hear some discussion about what the term "secret" means and what the term "board," discussing board issues is, and definitions of that. Because, you know, again, y'all constantly ask me to communicate with you all the time about what's going on and to make sure that you're aware of the issues. And I've taken a lot of effort to do that, but by the definition we have in front of us, that then was a secret meeting that I didn't invite all the other board members to, and I would have been in violation of this policy. Doing exactly what you've asked me to do. And so, and I will tell you that if you limit that for whoever is in any kind of position or wants to have any kind of issue looked at on the board, if you say, well, you can only talk with one other board member at a time, I just want you to understand the amount of time that it would take to then communicate effectively with the other board members. Because then I have to, you know, you got to constantly do, and I'm not trying to be subversive in any way, but you know, it takes work and communication, it's just like any relationship, I mean, you know, to make all this work. In fact, some board business is relationship building. And is that a secret meeting in part in board business if I'm meeting with another board member in a way to even improve or, you know, take a relationship in a positive direction? Because some might see that as a secret meeting. So I think we need to be careful with this. I think we can, I understand trying to curb the issue, but I think at the same time, we can make it extremely difficult to do anything in this district if we're not careful. And so I just want to be cautious with it. That's all I'm saying. So thank you, Dr. Marshall Lynn Franklin, for taking a look at that and those two items that were mentioned.
And you've, and, ma'am, one more thing?
Go ahead.
And you've taken great steps to go through and address all the concerns I have, scriveners and otherwise. Thank you so much for taking the time to do that. I appreciate it. Great job.
All right, Dr. Hamm, Budget Update.
Well, no, I have one other. I would like to look at BCB, Conflict of Interest. In the second paragraph, would you explain that for me? And basically, it talks about a board member may provide services or sell products to the district where he or she is a board member. BCB, Conflict of Interest.
So it's basically saying, as long as we follow state ethics, that it would be allowable? And state ethics is pretty strict on what you can do or can't do.
But I just want to make sure I'm clear. So you're saying, for an example, I'm an educational consultant, so I go out and I provide services to principals and schools as a, for classroom management or restorative practices. So you're saying, although I'm a board-
So you're saying although I'm a board member, I can contact one of the principals and get a contract to come in and to service the school? Because basically, that's what this is saying. Oh, absolutely.
We do need to take a look at that. Mr. Shad?
As I'm reading it, Mr. Chair and Dr. Elkins Johnson, this looks like this is already on in policy.
Right.
Right.
So, we can still take action on it because the policy's in front of us.
Right. The point I'm making, though, is that it's already in policy, and the only addition, I'm sorry, the change is to change it from trustee to board member, and then it's to add, and the board member is excluded from deliberating or voting on the matter.
Right.
So that way, that removes that conflict of interest, because they obviously have a vested financial interest, but the board can still approve the offer of services or selling the product. So it's already in policy.
Well, I guess my question is, sometimes when you go produce services to a school, it doesn't come before the board. So the board would have no idea what's going on.
So my reading is, it's only if it's sold to the district or the services. So I would agree with you, if it's directly to the school and that instructional leader approves it, it's allowed.
Well, if it's not in violation of ethics, and that, in this case, the ethics is the higher standard than our policy.
Right.
Because ethics clearly talks about where you have authority to control, and I would think that there, I can't imagine a principal or anybody else in our district that would be considered outside of our influence, where ethics would allow for that to happen a- as a district employee, right? You know, now, I mean, if a, if a district employee wants to use you as a lawyer, and it's not about board district matters, then they could do that, correct?
Yes.
Right, as long as it wasn't about a district matter. Now, if they want you to come represent them as a lawyer and, and pay for your services where it represents them as a district employee,
Right.
then that would start to get into, I think, some look at ethics. And I, I think that this policy would probably be the least of our concerns in that case, whereas the Ethics Commission. But, you know, i- if, if there's not purpose for it being there, where somehow that's allowing something to happen that's somewhere within that margin of the State Ethics Commission and nothing else. Like, I'm not sure what it's addressing by being there, I guess. Do, do I make sense? If ethics is restrictive, then what is that allowing to happen? I don't know. I'm just asking.
But it's already in policy.
I understand that.
And in policy, it's saying you have to, it's in accordance with the State Ethics Act.
That's right.
So that was already in place.
Right.
Looks like it's just adding an extra layer to say if it comes to a board vote, that person needs to recuse themselves.
Okay, but, so then, just to be sure that we give them right directions, are we asking to change it? Or are we just asking, Dr. Elkins Johnson, did you just want clarification?
No, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on understanding.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I think, as it was said before, that the State Ethics Act is the bar here. I mean, that would be worth reviewing, because that's gonna, that's gonna set, set the course. So I, I think, as Mr. Shad has said, this is just add another layer from, you know, things that are deliberated or voted. But I, I, at this point, I don't see an issue with the policy.
I, I guess I'm looking at, is it confusing the issue? If state ethics doesn't allow for that to happen at all, then why have that in there and complicate the issue is the question I'm asking.
Which, Mr. Chair, I'm assuming, I'm assuming it does. There must be some situation where state ethics allows for it.
Right.
And I'm assuming this is coming from School Board Association, then they want to add on this extra layer. So you are allowed to do it.
Right.
But you also have to recuse yourself from a vote.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, I think the, the term that is consistent with regard to ethical policies is influence. Is not doing business with a body, with a body where you are, you know, elected official, where you are able to exert influence. As board members, we are able to exert influence, so I can't think of any situations offhand where we would be able to, it would be a slippery slope to do business with, with, yeah.
I'm bringing the world's finest chocolate next time. We have a sale up in this joint.
Mr. Chair, and, and if, if you go to the, to the reference section below, the legal references you'll find, and, and legal references be number five, it references the section of the law. So I, I, I'm fine with it as is.
Okay, well, we'll leave it as it is. All right, other questions or comments? Anybody? Okay. All right, now the budget. Dr. Hamm.
Dr. Miley, presenting the updates to the budget.
Mr. Chair, as he, as Dr. Miley comes up, I do want to, just for clarification earlier, I'd said in the legislative update, this would be covered under eleven point two. It's actually covered under ten point two.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, board members, Dr. Hamm. What I wanted to do tonight was update you with a few changes that have occurred since, one, since you passed the budget on May the second, and even since last week, and then when the county council approved our budget on, in third reading on June the eighth. Some are positive and some are negative. To get to the bottom line first, what we may, what I'm asking you tonight is to hear our, hear the things, the moving parts that we have, and we may be, we may need to bring back an amended budget to you. It would still fit in under the budget guidelines and approval from the county, but it may be rearranging a few things that we may need to bring back to you at the June twenty-seventh board meeting. We're still working on those, and there's still some moving parts that we still haven't nailed down. But for instance, you know about the base student cost decline. We were basing our budget estimate on the twenty-four thirty-five number, which was the senate number. Since I've been involved in school finance, I've never seen the number go down after senate finance. Senate finance usually adds. They compromised and they took ten dollars off. That cost us about three hundred and eleven thousand dollars from the budget that we brought to you on May the second. In addition to that, on the seventh of June, one day before we went to county council, the State Department of Education released their, their latest projections of our current funding levels and our projected funding levels for FY seventeen eighteen. In that, they adjusted the academic assistance weightings for Richland Two to the tune of one point seven million dollars less funding for the current year. It's about a million dollars for the current year and less funding, and it brought our base down for next year. So that's about a one point seven million dollar reduction in our anticipated funding. The good news was county council, and we, we talked to several of you prior to that county council meeting, and we asked, prior to the county council meeting on June the fifth, the updated numbers from the auditor showed that we were getting about six, about seventy thousand additional dollars from the state reimbursement, and they had estimated about one point four million dollars in carryover from our current tax collections for FY sixteen seventeen to carry forward to sixteen seventeen eighteen, which was about one point four million dollars additional funding. We got that approval from the county level. We knew about the state money. We weren't sure about how bad it was going to be, but that gave us about one point four million dollars at, at the time, thinking, well, that's three hundred thousand dollars we're going to lose on base student costs. We were about a million to the plus. So, right, and we also found out a couple of days after that, that we got some hold harmless funds. The state issued about three million dollars to districts for faster growing districts. I think you've discussed this in the past, in the past, where Act three eighty-eight has not kept pace with the property tax collections that are exempted. They allocated about three million dollars. It's one-time money, we think. They, they based it on an, they sold some property that ETV owned, and they used those one-time funds to, we'll get about two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for that. All of that said, in addition to that, we also have one final moving part that we haven't, we think we understand how it's going to be implemented, and that's the two percentage point increase in employer contributions. We think, based on what we've been told, that we, we should not be any worse off in terms of the bottom line as we anticipated back on May the second. At that time, we thought we were getting all the funds in the revenue category to us. We would expense it out and pay it out. At this point now, they're putting about, about one percentage point of that to PIBA directly. We, we're going to get a credit in terms of our contributions. We're supposed to be getting additional one percent allocation directly from the state, above and beyond what we think we've been allocated. That's the one piece that we're not quite sure. If we aren't getting additional funds for that one percent, then we're, we're going to be making some negative adjustments. If that's in addition to what we think we are allocated, we should be in pretty good shape. What I would like to do is work on that over the next two weeks and bring you back an adjust amended budget if necessary. We know that there's going to be some changes because of the way the PIBA allocation's going to be. Our expenditures for, 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 for retirement contributions are probably going to go down, but our revenues from the state from retirement contributions go down, so those line items will need to be adjusted. Our EFA numbers are going to be adjusted, and our local property tax number is going to be adjusted. So there's going to be some adjustments between line items, and we hope that the negative impact on the bottom line is as little as possible. If you would, we'd like to bring that back to you on the twenty-seventh for final approval.
I think that's great.
Any questions?
Other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
For clarity, I, I just, with all those numbers flying around, from the amount that we approved that went to county council as an amount to approve the budget increase, does that change? What, I mean, what's your?
Well, we take a budget and it's, it's, as you can, you've been there, you know how clear and concise the county meetings are. The budget, the approval that they actually approve is just the local portion of our budget. We usually tell them, oh, it's two hundred and seventy-three million dollars, but they actually only approve that one forty-seven, one forty-eight.
Sure, yeah.
That went up about one point four million dollars.
Okay.
So that, that line item in our budget to you will, will, it'll go up in per, in property taxes, local property taxes will go up in our line item budget to you. In terms of the two hundred, we took our budget request, our total budget request that you approved back on May the second, was two thou- two mi- two thousand, two hundred and seventy-three million, nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars and not five hundred and ninety dollars. That budget may not change. We hope, we're, we're still targeting that line item with additional local funding, but reduction in state funding.
Right, so there's going to be some offsets that end up netting out to where it would be about the same.
We hope so.
That's hopefully the bottom line.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair.
Please forgive me for stepping out on your presentation, Dr. Miley, but on.
I have a lot of people that do that on a regular basis.
But I came back.
That's rare.
Out of the millage agencies?
Yes.
Who was the only agency that did not go in request all the way to the cap?
Ooh, ooh, ooh.
I want Dr. Miley to say this for the record.
Yeah, I get it.
For the record, as, as far as I know, and as, in witnessing several county council meetings, all the other millage, millage agencies ask for the cap or more than the cap, except for Richland Two. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, which is why, you know, I, I have made it clear, and I did a secret meeting and email with everybody, and I told them, I am not doing any more than the maximum millage ever again, because we are a growing district with needs. The legislature bounces the money up and down, and, and we have to stay competitive. And so that's something, and I do appreciate Mr. Jackson and, and Mr. Manning, who also had secret meetings with them, to talk to them about the budget, and they were very supportive of our desire to take advantage of the additional funds that the auditor found for us, and, and have been supportive of our district. So we appreciate their support as well.
And I also appreciate y'all's support. Some of you have not been to the meetings, and in the past, there's been meetings when there were no board members. And I'll guarantee you the reception and, and courtesies and, and respect, I think, and the treatment that Richland Two got this year, probably partial because of Mr. Jackson, but also because of board members. When board members are in the room with us, we're treated differently, and, and it really, I think, helps the district in the long run.
And, and Harry, I appreciate y'all. I mean, I was at every meeting, except for the one where we had a board meeting that I couldn't be, but I was at all the other ones, but y'all were there, staff, Dr. Hamm, there at all the meetings. And, and we appreciate that, because, you know, we'd be in trouble without y'all, so thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll get to Dr. Elkins Johnson.
If you go back to the line item number nine thirty-seven, student health and fitness, can you tell me what's that for?
I am at a loss. Where are we?
In the report.
I believe that's eleven point one, right? I mean, I think that's eleven point one. Are you in that?
I'm.
Yes, eleven point two.
I think we're on ten point two.
We're on the budget update.
Oh, my apologies.
Quarterly financials, we'll.
We'll get to that.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Back to the question about millage agencies. Of the, the millage agencies who presented their budgets to the county council, were all granted what was requested?
Correct, I believe so. I believe, and, and I, and it is, I understand the importance of, of the earlier question from, by Mr. Shad. Some of these millage agencies, their millage rates are so low that a cap might be a half a mil.
Right.
So when they say they're going to the cap, that, that is going to the cap, but it might be two or three mils or a mil. Richland One, certainly, that's, they, they, that's not such the case. They, I think they got twelve or thirteen additional mils this year. But yes, they usually got what they, they asked for the cap, and they got, got what they requested.
Yeah, the, the purpose my call, my call, my, my, my question is, and I echo the comments of our chair about, you know, the, the need to, we have a growing district, we have costs that are increasing and so forth. In fact, you know, the, the millage cap is, is designed to be, can be looked at as a cost adjustment that's allowable by law. And at the same time, as we've discussed in, in prior meetings, we're going through this budget process, that we work really diligently to find that balance between good stewardship to the district and good stewardship to the taxpayer. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, as we approached our budget process and came in with what we, what we requested, that was honored by, by the, by the, by county council. So just not to confuse that we didn't, we weren't asking for a cap and then didn't get it. We, we, everyone got essentially what they asked for, correct? So the, the issue becomes, as we approach future budget sessions, given that history, that may be something we need to consider, right?
That y'all could consider, yes.
That's right.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Only other thing is, next year I'm asking for a building, because if I ask for a building and I don't get it, I might get more budget. If you were there, you would know what I'm talking about.
And, and, and one of those other secret meetings, Mr. Chair, I, I, I do recall, you know, the thing that's important to me, and I just want to say, state this for the record. We, we, I would caution us as we approach budgets based on what others are doing and what county council is, is doing. I, I still think our essence and the character of our district is to focus on what are the needs of this district? What are the needs of our educators, what are the needs of our, of our kids, and still approach it in that, in that manner. And then, and then move with our request accordingly. My caution is, is that based on county council's decisions or the way that they conduct their meetings, that we don't walk away saying, well, since everyone else is doing it, we do it. And, and I'm not suggesting, Mr. Manning, that that's what you're saying.
I'm jumping off the bridge because you did it.
I know you are, and, and, and that's my, that's my statement there, because it, it can get frustrating at those meetings, and I attend to them as well, where we can walk away with this idea that, okay, since everyone else is getting it, let's just do it. I just want to approach it with a cautious nature. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think that's what we're all saying, right? I mean, that's why I said we're a growing district, we have growing needs. We have to stay competitive. We have folks now that were struggling, and we took care of bus drivers, because we know we're struggling in that area, but there's lots of other areas across the district that we're also struggling. We have programs that we've partially funded, that we haven't fully funded, to make sure they're effective and efficient. I've been asking for foreign language since the day I walked on the board, and, and we have some of it, but we still have a long way to go. So I think we just have a lot of needs, and so that's more of my suggestion is to address the needs than just because everybody else is jumping off the bridge. We should too, so.
Let me just state for the record, since we're making so many jokes about secret meetings. Let me just remind you, I was raised by my grandmother, and she shared with me a hit dog or hurt dog always barked. So I just thought I would just put that out there. Thank you.
I appreciate y'all's stop. All right, next on the agenda, eleven dot one, update strategic plan.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you know, we've been working on strategic planning since the last school year.
Good evening, Chairman Manning, Dr. Hamm, members of the board. I have the pleasure of presenting to you guys an update of our two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty, twenty strategic plan. As I was sitting over there pondering to come up with some sort of clever introduction about the strategic plan, because it can be somewhat redundant, we've gone over this several times. I was reminded that, of course, twenty twenty vision, it's not necessarily perfect vision, but it definitely represents sharpness and clarity. vision, but it definitely represents sharpness and clarity. So I am hoping that this plan will give us some idea of where we're going to go as a district by 2020 by providing some sharpness and clarity. One of the first things you'll see as we move forward in our, in our strategic plan is the development or crafting of our mission statement. As you guys know, the mission statement will be up for your approval tonight, but the mission statement simply reads that there is, I should say, there is a change, a recommended change to the mission statement to be more aligned to the strategic plan. The mission statement reads, "In partnership with our community, Richland School District 2 will work to develop the global citizen of tomorrow, citizens who are prepared to lead and excel in their chosen pathways." Every school district or every organization should have a vision statement. The vision statement should serve as that north star for that organization. And so with the collabor, in collaboration with many of our partners that Dr. Hamm just listed, we have crafted a vision statement that we would like to share with you. I've had an opportunity to share this vision statement with our instructional leaders, principals at the end of the year in service, and the vision statement reads, and I'll ask for some help from my fellow administrators, "The Richland 2 strives to be the premier school district..."
Premier!
Nice. Nice.
Wow.
It is simple. We strive to be the premier school district, a learning and working environment where all partners are committed to creating, sustaining, and investing in a culture and environment of excellence, and where all are afforded the opportunity to maximize their gifts and talents as they pursue their pathways to purpose. We've had an opportunity before, I've also had an opportunity to come before you and share with you the strategic plan and this diagram as the representation of that plan. And as you can see, once again, prominently placed within our strategic plan and serves as our foundational core values would be our four squares, squares of learning, character, and community, and joy, which have become, I think, core to everything that we do here in this district and remains front and center in what we will do as we move forward. In addition to that, we have also identified what we would like to call our principal practices. Those principal practices will be things that we will implement in everything that we do, things like being innovative and using data to, to help us as we make appropriate decisions, which relates to all that we do in our districts, of course, in student instruction, but also in making decisions as related to examples of the budget. Diversity and multicultural inclusion will also serve as a principal practice, as well as partnering and communication. In the center of our strategic plan, you'll see our universal strategic goals, and these are goals that we will be working to achieve over the next three years. Those goals are, will be related in the areas of culture and environment, that will be related in talent, and also achievement. So what does the plan look like? This is a very simplistic and straightforward example of what our strategic plan is going to look like, and just to kind of give you an overview, as I go through this section of the, of the update, in each part of the update, each part of the plan, learning will have three fundamental goals. There will have a goal in achievement, there will be a talent goal that's related to learning, there will also be a culture and environment goal that is related to learning. And within those goals, there will be outcomes. The outcomes will be in three, also strategic areas. There will be an outcome for students, there will be an outcome for our employees or staff, and there's also going to be an outcome for our community. So we're looking to solidify the whole, the concept of, of a family, a whole concept of a community, so also by doing that, we need to have an outcome, keep front and center each, each person that, or each entity that makes up our partners. And our partners are defined as our students, our employees, our staff, and our community, which includes our parents. So our achievement goal under learning reads, "Richland 2 will work to ensure success of all partners by preparing them for their futures." Our talent goal, "Richland 2 will dedicate resources toward ongoing development of the gifts and talents of all partners." And our culture and environment goal, "Richland 2 will promote collaboration among all partners in order to build and add to our collective knowledge and expertise." The same thing applies to character. "Richland 2 will encourage all partners to demonstrate a high level of moral and ethical character within and outside of the Richland 2 community." Our talent goal, as it relates to character, will be, "Richland 2 will work to recruit, develop, and retain partners who exemplify character that is ideal with the high expectations of the district and the Richland 2 community." And our culture and environment goal, as it relates to character, will be, "Richland 2 will work to maintain a culture and environment that reinforces positive character traits." Our community goals, our achievement goals as it relates to community, "Richland 2 will maximize opportunities for partners to collaborate and work together for the greater good." Our talent goal, "Richland 2 will strive to identify and maximize the collective talents of its partners." And our culture and environment goal, "Richland 2 and its partners will work to make the Richland 2 community an all-inclusive and desirable place to live, work, and play." And finally, our joy square, and the goals that are related to joy. Achievement goal, "Richland 2 will celebrate and recognize the achievement of all partners." Our talent goal, "Richland 2 will consistently look for ways for our partners to experience joy while learning and working." And Richland 2, I'm sorry, our culture and environment goal, "Richland 2 will strive to have a joyful and productive environment for all partners." The next steps will consist of developing outcomes under each goal, and again, I shared that with you earlier, those goals, those outcomes will be related to our students, related to our staff, and also related to, directly to our community. Next, we will apply the principal practices in accomplishing those outcomes. So when we come back, when I come back and report what those outcomes are going to be, you will see words like innovation, data, partnership, community, diversity, and inclusion in those outcomes. And then third, school districts will, I'm sorry, schools will develop strategic plans aligned to the district. And so what we are, if you remember, we've asked for a waiver, and which gives our, our schools an opportunity to all write their strategic plans at the same time. So once this plan is approved, this following school year, all of our schools will be writing their strategic plans, all at the same time, using these universal goals in each plan. So there will be consistency amongst the district's plans. And that is my report. Any questions?
Board members?
No questions, just want to say excellent job on that.
Thank you.
I see the vision and the mission, so thank you for that, and your team as well.
All right, Ms. Mack.
I want to tell you, great job on your presentation. I know that one of the things that we've strived for in the district, I know, is transparency and making sure that everyone has input, not just our external stakeholders, but our internal stakeholders, and making sure that the end user, our student, is, at the end of the day, the product whose needs we are striving to meet. I appreciate the consistency of the presentation, and I'm saying you, but I know that there are a team of people sitting at that table and who are not at the table probably, who took part in that. So thank you for your vision and for spearheading that effort, and for all of the people who worked together to make that happen. I appreciate it. Job well done.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I agree with everything that's been said there. I want to ask questions for clarification. I'm Dr. Davis. On, on your achievement goals, talent goals, and culture, and culture and environment goals, so it'll say, for example, under community, "Richland 2 will maximize opportunities for partners to collaborate and work together for the greater good." And then when you have the next steps, develop outcomes, is that, will that be the, will that be, if I were to finish that statement, that goal by doing X, Y, and Z, is that what those outcomes then will articulate?
Within the outcomes, within, so the outcomes may not necessarily say by, but the strategies to accomplish those outcomes would be, these were the things specifically that we would do.
Correct, yeah.
And so we would not necessarily list those strategies, because there will be numerous, and we'll be continuously changing and adapting, but there will be some specific outcomes of things that we are trying to achieve as, as it relates to community, relates to the community square and the achievement goal.
Right, okay, thank you.
So I think to piggyback on that question, that some of them, some of it will be measurable outcomes, right? I mean, there will be some measurable outcomes in there.
The outcomes and the strategies will have a measurement component, but not necessarily the goals. These are the goals to achieve.
No, I get the goal, but I'm saying, when you say the outcomes, the outcomes, some of those will be numeric, not all, but some will be measurable.
I think you would need some, some ability to measure to see whether or not you've met that goal.
Right.
And so if the achievement goal is to be, for example, among the top half of performing school districts, there'll be data to support whether or not we met that goal.
Right, okay, that's what I was asking.
But that's also a moving mark. So every year, that mark removes, but if you set a specific number, then you may not be able to hit that number.
Well, you answered my question. When I said measurable, I didn't mean number, I meant it was measurable. That is measurable, so, absolutely.
We should be able to show things like, did we increase our partnerships this year? When we talk about multicultural diversity, inclusion, what do our, what do our vendors look like? Did we increase the number of minority vendors from one year to the next? If that's a strategy, so that would be...
You hit the nail on the head for what I was asking.
And Mr. Chair, and just to clarify again, so we'll have the outcomes by showing the data that supports the goal. I guess my question is, is each school, then, as they develop their strategic plan, like you said, they'll all have that, is that where there's a link between the outcome and the goal in the, in the by part? What I mean by that is, "Richland 2 will maximize opportunities for partnerships to collaborate and to work together for the greater good by doing," what is that, where is the strategy part on what's doing to achieve, to, to maximize those opportunities for partnerships? Is that coming from the schools' individual plans? Is that where the detail is?
When the schools develop their individual plans, again, they will have their own outcomes, and they will have their own strategies. We are just providing them with the goals, that we have a similar goal, but each need of, of the needs of every school vary.
Right.
And so maximizing and collaborating with, some schools may not be at the same level of collaboration with, with community partners as another school. So what they may try to achieve may be totally different from one another, so that's why we don't want to be so specific and say, you will do this by doing that, puts them in a, in a box.
Right.
And, you know, of course, one way to think outside the box is to simply don't get in it.
No, I appreciate that.
No, I appreciate that.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you.
Well, my, my last comment, and I want to kind of give a nod to both you and Dr. Hamm on this, is, you know, as we look at the transition from Dr. Hamm to you, the fact that you've taken those four squares and that part of the strategy, and that's still a core of our, you know, main focus, and now we're just building on that and getting as, to the, I hear the next level all the time, but this is truly moving to the, taking what we've had, expounding on it, the great work that was done. I think, you know, if we were to go outside of here and try to bring somebody in, they'd probably be looking to toss that and start over, and so I think the fact that, that y'all were able to bring this together and really continue on a lot of the good work we've done, I think is fantastic, and real nod to both of y'all for your, your work and effort on where we are with the fantastic plan, so thank you.
Appreciate that, and as I exit, I'd also like to echo what you guys said. I want to, of course, recognize the executive staff for all their hard work, as well as our advisory councils, the many advisory councils that we have, our parents that were willing to be vocal and participate and share with us the direction, some things that they would like to be a part of, and I think that is evident when you see the focus on culture and environment, as well as finding ways to maximize our, our community talent, our parent talent involving them. We've had community conversations, and we use the strategic plan as a foundation or discussion for our community conversations, and got some really, really good input from, from our community about the direction of the district. So I just want to say thank you to everyone that participated in this and everyone at home that's watching, and say thank you for your assistance.
Thank you so much, thank you. All right, next on our agenda, item 11.2, the third quarter financial report. Dr. Hamm?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Miley will be picking up on the third quarter financial report.
Yes, just a brief overview, you have in your board docs, the third quarter financial statement, that was through March 31st. I teach, say this the same, same thing every time, this is not always consistent with revenues and expenditures aren't on the same timeline, so we don't need to worry too much about that. One of the things I do like to do is I look back at the last six years, for instance, 77.8% of our revenues have been received to date. The last six years, that's 77.7, so I mean, it's right on target, which we had experienced over the last six years. If you go to the expenditure side, we're right at 66, 67% of our expenditures to date. The last six-year average is 69.1, so we're actually slightly below, if you're going to be below one, is the expenditure side versus the revenue. So we're right on target. My, my recommendation and my analysis of this is that we're right on target with our year-to-date. Again, this is through March 31st. The final quarter will be included in the final audit's done, that's done in late summer, early, early fall. With that, any questions? Dr. Elkins, you had a question?
I have two. One is 825 Sisters of Charity Foundation.
Yes.
Do they give money to the school? If you can explain that for...
Sisters of Charity Foundation.
That's number 825.
If I remember right, they do make a contribution to the school. I can find out exactly more about it if you'd like.
Yes, and then for 937, student health and fitness, what is that?
Yes, those are funds that we use to pay PE teachers, and we've received 145 to date, we have 218,000 budget, about 81,000 spent to date. Chances are, that doesn't, well, I know that doesn't include all of April, May, June, and some of July. So we are, we, we may not be exactly on target, but we would probably carry those funds over to the next year.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, other questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
On, on the, our use of the reserve fund to manage cash flow?
Yes.
How, what's the greatest percent that we get into that as a percentage amount during our revenue inflows?
You mean, how close do we get?
Yes, to zero.
In October, November, we have historically gotten very close.
Okay.
Very close. Sleepless nights, close. Okay. We anticipate being that in, in the future. We think that we'll be okay. We start trying to work that cash flow analysis. If we thought we were not going to make it, we would come to you and ask you, so we issue a tax anticipation note, but we have not needed to do that in the past, and we don't think we'll need to do it again. But in October and November, it's very difficult times.
Yeah, and that's important to know, again, as, for the public, when we see a retention of funds, that that fund, that those funds, of course, are designed to help with that cash flow management, and the fact that we don't have to go into a negative situation avoids...
A borrowing money to make payroll.
Right. Which does what for bond ratings and things?
Well, it'd increase our debt, and it, we have to pay it back, we do usually, you pay it back very quickly, but it would increase our debt burden. It doesn't look good on our, on our credit rating. It's not a death, you know, it's not the end of the world, but it doesn't help our credit rating. Financial management, and that's the next example of good financial management, not needing to go to tax anticipation notes, is a, is a good checkmark on our, on our, on our credit rating. So they all fit together, and there, there's not one single thing that would, would, would hurt us that bad, but that's one of those things that they ask each time, whether we needed to go to the fund balance to balance the budget, or whether you needed to issue tax anticipation notes. Thank you.
Conversely, have we, are we, do we hit the max of, because we have a range, right? Have we been hitting the max?
Board policy is, is between 7%, a minimum of 7, and a maximum board policy of two, the equivalent of two months operating budget. That's 16.7%. During the course of the year, we actually might, well, it's an accounting issue, so at the end of the year is done. In any individual month, we might have excess cash flow because we get a check from the county for $60 million or something, so, you know, because we get property tax revenues. So that cash balance may be high, it's not technically a fund balance, but it may be the cash flow is relatively high that month.
I guess I was just asking, do we, do we need to consider an increase in that? If you, I don't want you having sleepless nights, because that really should be my sleepless nights as well, so if we need to increase that and look at that, I just want to make sure we address that.
Well, I think it's something that you could consider, for instance, if we end up this year, which we, we may, depending on tax collections to date, we could possibly, I don't want to jinx it, but we anticipate having, you know, in the, in the black this year, if that was, there had been years in the past when it was multiple millions of dollars. If that happened this year, it could push us above the 16.7%, and that would be something that the board could consider about raising that. It doesn't mean you have to, you know, that's a goal, that's a policy. I would think that you would probably allow it to be higher than that, but that's, that would be a board policy. That would be a nice problem to have.
Okay. Well... Okay, well, just key, if that's something we need to address, I want to make sure it's on our radar, you know, as we grow and, and those, and costs go up, you know, is that something that we need to consider to make sure that we're solvent in that area?
Well, as, as our budget gets larger, you know, if we don't add to that fund balance, the percentage represents of the month, of the two years of the other budget.
And I understand it's a percentage, but still, you know, when you, you have increasing people and increasing costs, that could outgrow the percentage. That's, that's all I'm saying. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Hamm, it's 12 dot one, we tabled, so 12 dot two, we have approval of our mission statement, if I, which was presented to us. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Ms. Mackey made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Is there any discussion? Well, no discussion, we'll take the vote. Oh, yeah, sorry, you can speak loudly. It's all right. All right, hand vote. All right, unanimous. By the way, that, for any of you who were around the last time we did the mission statement, this was much simpler. I think we, the board wordsmithed the mess out of that thing. You remember, so, great job, staff and everybody for, for that statement. All right, 12 dot three, actually, Dr. Koshpar, I think you were part of staff at that time, weren't you? That was painful. 12 dot three, personnel recommendations, releases and in district transfers. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Agostini. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. You want hand vote again? No, okay. Yeah, the motion was, well, it was actually reversed, Ms. Mackey. I don't remember who made the motion. I said it. It was the other one.
And then seconded by--
Ms. Agostini, yeah. Oh, you're right, it is the mission statement. So, that's what came up now. Can we just do a hand vote? Because we got the mission statement up front of us.
Should it be--
Right, move to approve the mission statement for 2017, but right, so.
Yeah, in addition, the motion was, was made by Ms. Mackey.
Ms. Mackey.
And seconded by Ms. Agostini.
All right, you want us to vote, Tamika, or? Yeah, okay. If there's any question, it's on video. If we need to go back and make sure that, I'll double check. All right, motion passes 7-0, and just to be clear, that was for the personnel recommendations. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is agenda, agenda items for the June 27th meeting. Dr. Hamm.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On June 27th, the items on the agenda of election officers. I'll pull up the board meetings now.
Board members, any other agenda items that you'd like to see on this or future agendas? We will next go to our second public participation. Again, we have no one signed up at this time, but if you'd like to speak before the board, please do so now. All right, and last, we have our board and superintendent comments. Dr. Elkins Johnson.
First, I want to say thank you to Zachary Butler, who's not here, but provided that music for us. It was great music to our ears, so thank you, Zachary, for all the things that you've done and your great work academically, not only with the arts, but your academics as well. Also, the presentations, the students who were awarded and the administrators, want to say thank you to that, Dr. Davis and your team for the strategic plan. Thank you for all your hard work, and I want you to know that the next time you see me, I will be 50 years old, so I'm just so excited just to celebrate my birthday this weekend.
Happy birthday. All right, Ms. Agostini.
I wanted to recognize Dr. Elkins Johnson, not only for hitting her milestone birthday, but also for her outstanding choice and selection of Zachary Butler tonight for our inspirational moment. Also, congratulations to our superstar athletes in the track and field area and all those that were recognized this evening for their different awards. And finally, just wanted to comment that I have been sitting here for the past six months, and as people have now learned that I'm on school board and even while I was running, they continue to say this was a thankless job. As I celebrated so many successes at the end of the school year and stood on stage to congratulate those who graduated from high school, I don't need to be thanked. I'm grateful to have the opportunity to sit there and see the smiling faces and accomplishments of the students that we produce from Richland Two.
Great, thank you. Ms. Mack.
Yeah, I just want to say, as always, thanks for being here. Oops, I always forget. Thanks to everyone in the room for being here, some who have to be and some who elect to be. It's been a long day and we appreciate your presence here. Thank you again, Rissie McDonald for being here, and Kayla and Tiffany for being here and being quite a long--
And a waiting. Did you get plenty of issues tonight? Did you pick up on plenty of issues to research? You came at a very kind of heavy waiting meeting, but thank you, sweetie, for being here. This stuff that we do is for students like you. Bless you. And I wanted to say, the one comment that Dr. Davis made tonight, one way to think outside the box is not to get in it. I've already tweeted that, but that is just so, that is so profound, that is so profound, and I appreciate the forward thinking and outside the box thinking that we all do in this room and the people in this room. And Dr. Hamm, Friday night's celebration of her 70s groovy themed retirement. One of the things that I was commenting on as I posted on social media, that celebration, is that as we're celebrating her retirement, so many people in the room kept talking about the culmination of an era and how long you've been here, and so many people in the room were not here and have retired, and the seamless transition into the next era, into the next generation of leadership, and I appreciate the work that so many people have gone in, have put into that seamless transition, transition, Dr. Hamm and Dr. Davis and lots of people who have supported that effort. I look forward to moving forward and not having any, you know, rubs or snags, and I just appreciate all of the people and organizations and the implementation that it takes to make that happen. It doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you all, and have a good evening.
Ms. Blight.
Well, everything's been said. I'll add, thanks to, to Dr. Miley and the finance team for, for these updates and coming through that budget season, and we're excited about that. Also, like to thank Lottie Chisholm and all your work that you do surrounding discipline in our schools. It's always challenging to go through those, and those can, those can be tough. That's just the reality of it, and I'm thankful for a district that takes a hard look at that and at the same time looks for alternatives. So, thanks for all you guys do as well. And then, Dr. Davis, we, we look forward to you coming on board officially without the elect behind your name, and then, and just thanks for the strategic plan update. Well done.
Dr. Koshpar.
Okay, pretty much everything has been said, but congratulations again to Zachary Butler for his outstanding performance and to all award recognitions this evening. If I can just take, and I assume this is the proper moment I can say something, going back to what Dr. Elkins Johnson was saying about policy, BCB, if I could ask Dr. Franklin, when she talks with the School Board Association, I'd like clarification on that second paragraph because to me it seems to be in direct conflict with the following paragraph, and so, I'd like some clarification on that, and also, they're talking about service and products to the district. Do they mean the district as a whole, or do they mean that we cannot, or individual schools cannot be approached? I'd like some clarification on that. I'm sure most of you probably understand, but I don't.
I agree.
You know, but I think there's some direct conflict there that I just need some clarification.
That's interesting at the end of that law as well, the bottom of the page.
Right.
That says that board members can provide services to sell products to the district as long as the transactions are in accordance with the--
Right, right. This was all, of course, from 1976.
Right.
You know, so, and I think that there have been some new, some new changes to the state ethics laws since, you know, most recently.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shad.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I also want to recognize Zachary Butler for his efforts thus far. I want to congratulate all graduates of 2017. It was a, it was sort of old hat for most of our members, but it was new for Ms. Agostini and myself, that marathon that we took on, but it was wonderful. It was very rewarding, very, it was emotional at times, it was, to, to see those parents, the proud faces, and of course, the children as well, and they're going into a new chapter, and I know they will continue to represent the district well. I am also appreciative of the strategic plan, and I want to commend Dr. Davis and staff for a wonderful plan, and what stuck out for me is that we are a district of choice. We're a premier district and we want to remain so, and that we want to make sure that every school is an excellent choice. Competition is great, but we want folks to come into our district, remain in our district, and to have tough choices as to which school they want to have their child go to because everyone will be excellent. And last, but certainly not least, to all fathers and all father figures, we want to wish everyone a happy Father's Day this weekend, and particularly for our chair and the secretary of this board, I wish you all happy Father's Day, gentlemen. And for those who support fathers, I ask that in addition to those ties and socks that you're going to give us, in the words, in the words of Chris Rock, please let them have a big piece of chicken. Thank you.
Exactly right.
I got a card in my office that has that, yeah.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. You gave away the secret of what I'm getting, man. Now, I won't be surprised anymore. Dr. Hamm? No, the ties and the socks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have--
And they're still available for viewing online if anybody wants to go back and, and view the ceremonies. They were great, and we're really proud of this class of seniors. The scholarship totals for 2017 were 100 and 16 million dollars. That's up from 103 million the previous year, so that's a really significant number and a significant increase. We're so proud of those students. I also want to mention that through a partnership with the University of South Carolina at Sumter, Richland Two now makes it possible to offer a two-year degree, two-year college degree to students in high school with no tuition costs, which is a major benefit to our students. So, certain rising ninth graders who qualify to Richland Two Avid Early College can earn an associate's degree from the University of South Carolina at Sumter, and the information about that is on our district website. Invite anybody who's interested, please look at the website or contact us so we can provide additional information about how to apply for that wonderful opportunity. I want to mention that our administrative offices operate on a four-day work week during the summer, so we are open on Monday through Thursday, and our offices are closed on Friday. The district office will be closed for the Fourth of July holiday, and actually, some of our schools will be closed that entire week. That works great because we can save a little on air conditioning during the hot July months. And then, annual registration for the 2017-18 school year is open and available right now. It started, so, parents, if you haven't completed your application and registration, the time to do so is now. I want to say a special thanks to Joe Burke. We're all going to miss him, but he has been hired as the chief communications officer for the Fort Mill School District, and he's been wonderful here in Richland Two. Our loss is certainly their gain, so, thank you so much, Joe. And then, finally, I want to thank everybody who had anything to do with the groovy goodbye. I had a blast, and so, whether you came in one of those outrageous costumes and that was your contribution, or you were the people behind the scenes that just planned a wonderful, wonderful party, thank you so much.
I want to thank everybody for their comments. You know, we, we're very fortunate to have the great staff and the students we have because we are the premier school district, period.
You have to pause and let them say that.
Well, pause, period. It just doesn't have the same effect, you know, I just--
Premier school district, and then you paused.
Yeah, don't worry about it. Y'all got it. We know we're the, that's why we hire good people, because if it was that to me, we'd be in trouble. Oh, I like to have a good time at these meetings because otherwise I cry, but anyways, I do appreciate, we have great community, great parents, you know, we got to attend Northeast Brooklyn Baptist where they had, recognized their graduates, elementary, middle, high, post-graduates, and, you know, that's just part of the community, being excellent and being part of our school district and recognizing academic excellence, and, and that's why we have such a great school district, because it's more than the great people and the great students, but a great community. Also, want to say, Rissy, thank you. I'll be sure to go home and tell Taylor that I saw you tonight. She'll be upset she didn't get to see you, but y'all text and whatever y'all folks do today. So, yes, Snapchat or whatever, but, so, anyways, I do appreciate. Dr. Hamm, so, when you were, when we appointed you to superintendent, and I think you were at the time the only one that hadn't applied for the position, I think Dr. Hudgens mentioned that, right? You were just bestowed the honor for being a great employee. When you came in, we gave you a standing ovation every meeting when you first came in. So, you have two meetings left, and I want to send you out the same way you came in, so I'm going to ask everybody to stand up and give Dr. Hamm a round of applause for her great work. And with that, no further lengthy soliloquy by me. Can we have a motion to adjourn? Yeah, that's always where I get y'all. Y'all have a great evening. Thank you.